That was posted a few days ago. As you probably just got to notice that we're recording this so that we can keep a record of the public meeting. Public involvement is one of the requirements for putting together the plan, and we've had three public meetings previously, and this will be our fourth, and they're all recorded, and recordings are available through the website. Where we posted all our various news regarding the homeowner assistance fund. The person labeled Maura Collins is actually Leslie Blackplumeau, who is taking over for Maura today. And she is going to do some initial discussion about sort of putting together the plan and how we got started with it, and then we'll discuss the different program design elements that we decided to focus on for the plan, and then we'll open it up to public discussion after that. So I guess more, and maybe there's also some technical issues Maura wants to talk about first, too. So I mean, Leslie wants to talk about first, too. So take it away, Leslie.
I think we're good on the technical issues. Mia is helping. She started the recording. That is super helpful for anybody who can't make it today. It would be probably the best thing if we mute our microphones when we're not speaking, and that'll cut out a lot of the background noise. So if you all are able to find your mute button, that will just help us be able to hear each other a little bit better. And George and I thought we would just do a quick walkthrough of the plan itself, and then look forward to answering questions and chatting with you all about your thoughts about the homeowner assistance fund plan. So I'm going to share my screen to get us started and run through a few slides. So hopefully you see a screen that says Vermont's Homeowner Assistance Fund Plan, because that is what we're going to talk about today. This plan needs to be submitted to the Treasury Department before we can launch the program. And so we have been working on this with public input for the last couple of months and are hoping to submit it very soon. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how we looked at the needs among homeowners in Vermont for mortgage assistance and the other kinds of assistance that can be provided through the homeowners assistance fund. And we gained an incredible amount of information about future demand for this kind of assistance by running a similar program in 2020 and for a couple of months earlier this year with CARES Act, federal funds provided through the CARES Act. We were able to run a mortgage assistance program during these months and able to serve nearly 900 households in Vermont. The vast majority were under, had household incomes under 100% of the area median, and those households all had a need for help with back mortgage payments. So during the operation of that program, we realized how much of a need there is for this type of assistance and prioritized providing this type of assistance in the future through the homeowner assistance program that will start up shortly in the next couple of months. So this slide is really just about our mortgage assistance program and how widely used it was. We provided in a short period of time nearly $10 million if in assistance to nearly 900 homeowners across the state who needed help with their mortgage payments. And in doing this, we also learned about how much they needed, in addition to learning how many homeowners needed assistance, we also learned what the average amount of assistance needed was, and we learned about, we also learned about their property tax situation because for those homeowners who have mortgages, we were able to help with property taxes as well while running the mortgage assistance program. So we learned that, on average, that the homeowners that did need help with property taxes needed about $1,800 worth of assistance to get home. So we've, George has run through this background on the homeowner assistance fund with you during prior public meetings, but this was a program that was established by the federal government to help homeowners over the longer, over the next five years through 2025. We can operate this program. We have $50 million for this program in Vermont, which is the small state minimum, and we expect to actually spend, it's quite possible we may end up using that 50 million before September 2025, but if we needed to, we could take that long to provide the assistance to eligible Vermont homeowners. The program is targeted at homeowners who make less than, well, anybody eligible is, has an income up to 150% of the area median, but the program is targeted to those that are making less than 100% of the area median income. In fact, 60% of all the funds that go out the door need to go to homeowners with incomes in that range. You know, I'm probably going to let George take over with this, but I did want to, before I turn over to George, I did want to just say a few more words about our research on the needs of, in Vermont for homeowners, for the kinds of assistance that we are planning through this program, which is really meant to target primarily those who are behind on their mortgages, because we know that the delinquency rate in Vermont is twice what it was prior to the pandemic, the last time the Mortgage Bankers Association released delinquency information. 4.4% of all Vermont mortgages were delinquent, and that is, you know, that is significantly higher than it was in 2019, when it was closer to 2%. And so we know that we still have a need, especially among loans that are offered through government programs like FHA and RD and VA. The delinquency and default rates among those kinds of loans are even higher. So we know we have a lot of work left to do to help bring homeowners current, especially who are using those programs, but this will be a program that will serve all homeowners, regardless of the kinds of mortgages they have. In fact, it can broadly, George can talk a little bit more about that, but it can serve a wider variety of types of mortgages than even the mortgage assistance program was able to serve. We also learned during that mortgage assistance program that 2.5% of all of the homeowners in Vermont were behind on their property taxes, and that's why that program is specked out in this half plan to be one of the largest uses of the funding. And we, you know, we also researched the need for homeowner association fee assistance and condo fee assistance, because that kind of assistance is critical to maintaining your home. Those, if you fall behind on those fees, you can put your mortgage at risk, and your housing stability is at risk. So in addition to utilities, which we all know is a great need, we have data from that through the re-urges program that was operated by the Vermont Department of Public Service, and actually is currently being operated by them. We've learned from their experience what, how many Vermont homeowners will be likely to need that assistance going forward, and so those four areas, the mortgage assistance, the property taxes, association fees, and utilities are the greatest needs among Vermont homeowners for the kinds of assistance that the half can cover. So I'm going to turn it over to George now to talk more about the plan. George, you're muted.
I know. So first thing I need to do is unmute. That, unfortunately, that eligible, that socially disadvantaged individual's definition there has been superseded, so we can kind of ignore that a little bit. But the idea is, just as a general matter, that the, not only do we have the income targeting in the sense that 60% of the funds need to go to households with 100% of AMI or less, they also would like us to try to target folks who are socially disadvantaged. Socially disadvantaged is a little bit broader than now than what that is, and that's why I'm kind of, we don't really need to dwell on that. But the point is that we are going to be collecting information in connection with applications to try to make sure that as we are going out and marketing this program and getting folks to sign up, that we make sure that groups that aren't, that are traditionally left behind or can sometimes be overlooked are definitely brought into the fold and we make it clear to folks that this program is available to them. There's not like any sort of quota or anything. It's really just a matter of making sure that everyone, including folks who, for example, it does, this doesn't say that anymore. Like I said, the definitions have changed, but one of the areas that we want to focus on and that the Treasury has asked us to focus on is folks with limited English language proficiency, which is why, you know, we will make sure that translated materials are available and that, you know, we work with groups such as the AALV to go out and publicize this program to the new American communities. The other, sort of the next slide gets into sort of the requirements for the plan, the basic requirements that we were given. One was that we had to have a data-driven assessment of needs, which is what Leslie was going through. Program descriptions for the different kinds of programs we would be offering, the methods for targeting the funding, and tied the, you know, and tying those to the data that we've developed. So that's why, that's what is sort of in the plan that you've gotten. If you've looked at the material that was distributed, the initial part of it deals with the development of the data, the community engagement that we've done so far to get input from folks as to, you know, what needs they see out there, and then also how that data ties to the programs that we have developed. When we were, if you go to the next slide, Leslie, when we were looking at the data, these are sort of the kinds of questions we were asking ourselves and the questions that we were asking in our public engagement, you know, what are the characteristics of the homeowners with high needs? Who should be an eligible household? You know, how do we determine, you know, equity when it comes to making sure that everybody is counted and has a chance to apply? You know, what kind of performance goals are we looking for? You know, a number of different questions that we had to look at in connection with putting together, putting together the plan. And I was hoping at this point, Leslie, I mean, could you post the plan itself, and we can go through the program design aspect of that?
Yep, I'm going to stop sharing for a minute while I bring that up.
Yeah, so as Leslie noted, we, given the volume of need, and you'll see this in the next set of materials, given the volume of need, we thought $50 million was going to pay for everybody for everything. Unfortunately, it doesn't. It only goes so far. If you just think of it as 50 rich people houses, that's pretty much all we've got. So to spread over an entire state and an entire set of interests. So we decided to focus on those things that, what we viewed as being the most immediate concerns when it comes to preventing foreclosure and preventing people from losing their homes. So obviously, we remained focused on mortgage assistance, the same kind of mortgage assistance that we've been providing in the sense of, you know, bringing people current on their delinquent loans. There you go. So that, this is the material that Leslie was summarizing before.
And What part of it would you like to jump to now?
If you could scroll down to the, to the, actually to the end, because I think that's the thing that we're talking about right now. So the, when we were creating the budget, we were looking at all the different kinds of things we could use the money for, and we added it all up. The cumulative total, and this is for, only if the program runs through, ran through 2024, the cumulative to, I mean, yeah, for 2023 at least, let's just say that, the cumulative total was $65 million, which is way in excess, obviously, of the money that we have. So we had to make some choices as to what we were going to cover and what we weren't going to cover. So again, we decided that we wanted to focus on those things that were specifically related to maintaining, you know, keeping people from losing their homes, and then we also maintained a fund that we were allowed to use to pay for housing counseling and for legal services for low-income clients. That's the counseling legal line. Even then, we're projecting that we're going to use up all the money by the end of 2023, and it's still more than the 50 million we're allowed, but, you know, not everybody takes up the benefits that are offered, and we figure, you know, that's about as close as we're going to be able to get when it comes to modeling this. So those are the programs that we focused on: mortgage reinstatement, utilities, association fees, and property taxes. So if you could go back up now, Leslie, to the description of the actual program elements, which is higher, 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 right there, yeah, program design. So again, the program goal is to help homeowners avoid foreclosure or displacement by mitigating the financial hardships related to the COVID-19 pandemic. When it talks to the program overview, that's the four things we're focusing on: partial or full reinstatement of delinquent first mortgages, delinquent property taxes, past due homeowner association fees or liens, past due utility charges, including electric, gas, home energy, water, and sewer. Oops. Somebody needs to pick their phone. And I see we have a question in the chat, and we'll go through them once, just in, just a second, and I'm glad that we have some questions, because I would hate for this to be just a lecture. So, and we talked about the target population of, you know, up to 150% median income can apply, but we are required to limit, to have 60% of the funding go to folks under 100% of median. Go to the next page. Generally, the homeowners will have to attest that they have experienced a financial hardship after January 21, 2020, associated with the pandemic, have the 150% of area median or less income, and own or occupy the unit as a primary residence. Finally, they will need to submit affidavit indicating the type of hardship that they're facing. Is it increasing cost? Is it a decrease of income? Is it some combination of both, related to job loss, the loss of hours, need to maintain, to assist a family member, something like that? Any property, 1 to 4 unit Vermont property or condominium is eligible, though it has to be the primary residence of the applicant. The assistance is a one-time assistance grant for the benefit of the eligible Vermonters. Loans that are in forbearance are eligible for assistance, and funds are directly paid to the mortgage servicer, the tax authority, the lien holder, or the applicable utility. The assistance can be used to pay delinquent principal interest, mortgage escrow payments, and those escrows can be for insurance, taxes, other types of escrowed amounts that are required under your mortgage, including past due amounts, then, sorry, past due fees and charges, and attorney's fees. So that even if, for example, a foreclosure has begun, you know, you can pay everything up off if you can just, if you want to just take back over and say, okay, I'm in shape now to move forward. I can at least get everything cleared out and go back to square one and just start making my regular payments again. For reverse mortgage, ors, one issue that we were advised of and was not covered under the old mortgage assistance was tax and insurance payments that may result in a foreclosure under a reverse mortgage, so we're going to include that. Obviously, we're going to cover delinquent property taxes into the old MAP program. You had to have a mortgage in order to qualify for any assistance. In this case, even if you don't have a mortgage, and the thing that you're facing is a property tax issue, we can still help you with your property taxes. Same with the homeowner association and other common charges. Utility charges, again, we did not cover that at all with the mortgage assistance program, and so we will be covering it here. One thing to note is that the Department of Public Service program obviously is still in effect and is there to help homeowners, and in order to sort of limit duplication and confusion and everything else, while we are setting up for doing utilities, until the Department of Public Service program is done, which I think they're scheduled to end by November 1st, we won't be accepting applications for utility charge assistance until then. And the delinquency period, this is a big change in the mortgage program, the delinquencies we could only cover back to a certain number of months. With this program, even if you were delinquent prior to January 2020, say sometime in 19, I'm sorry, 2019, I think, 2019, you know, if you had a hardship after January 2020 that, you know, resulted in you never ever really being able to catch up, you can still get assistance to go back to when the delinquency began. We, as part of our data review, projected that sort of the maximum amount that folks would need, you know, generally, we'd be covering about 2,000 Vermonters for about $20,000 worth of assistance, so that's the cap that we've put. The 20,000 can be split among all the different various uses that we are prioritizing: mortgage, property tax, association fee, and then utility. And I think that covers everything on that page. Again, we expect to try to get the program up and running within 45 days after Treasury approval, and we are hoping Treasury approval won't take more than a few weeks from now. So, you know, we're talking sometime in October, and we have until September 2025 or until the program funds are exhausted. And there's a discussion of the counseling and legal services grants, which we already discussed. The application process, we are focused, we are developing an online application process, though there will be the ability to do paper applications to the extent people request it. We found with the mortgage assistance program that for folks who are in that situation, who don't have regular access to an email account, that they could work with nonprofits to help them in preparing their applications and submitting them to us, because there is a lot of paperwork, and it's just probably better to make sure you have everything in hand before you send it, if you're not doing it online. The annual income determination, I think we've posted what the incomes are going to be online as well. If you could scroll down a little further.
Yep.
That's fine. The income verification, we're going to be asking for tax forms, basically. If, for whatever reason, someone doesn't have that material, you know, we can grant waivers based on certain, you know, other facts being able to be shown, like, is the household receiving SNAP benefits or Medicaid? Because under those programs, those are also income qualified, and the incomes are much less than what they would be under half. And then also, if the property is in certain fairly limited qualified census tracts, you know, these duty-to-serv areas or racial ethic areas of concentrated poverty, we can use that as a proxy for income, but pretty much everyone will need to provide their tax forms to prove their income. Scroll down a little further. I'm sorry. Oh, and then just generally, you'll be, the applicants will be required to provide information about what it is they're needing help for. For example, if you're looking for mortgage assistance, we need a current mortgage statement. If you're looking for utility assistance, a copy of the current utility statement to show what level of assistance you're looking for and from whom, because obviously that'll contain the contact information we need to do, to do our due diligence. We have, obviously, the nonprofits that we worked with in MAP that we would like to, you know, work with again in targeting communities to make sure that everyone has a chance to apply who needs the assistance. And I think those are the highlights, and I'm turning this into a lecture, which I did not want it to be. So I'm going to start going to the chat, because I think we've covered all the most important things. We had a, I'm hoping you will also be addressing those in situation where making voluntary payments or a keep that's been previously discharged, and specific to someone who made voluntary payments now for 10 years but has fallen behind due to two or three sources of incomes that stopped last year. As long as that person, if you're talking about payments on a mortgage to prevent, under a plan, and then the plan payments have now gotten behind, certainly that is something we can work with. Obviously, we'd have to work with the trustee's office, because I imagine those payments are made through the US trustee, or maybe not, if it's been that long, but we would need to work with the lender and just make sure they're going to take the payment and apply it as, in order to get someone current again. Given the budget restrictions, are you eliminating home repairs in eligible use? Unfortunately, and this is the one that really, you know, was hard for us, was, that was a program that we felt, you know, right now, we couldn't focus on, both because of the budget and because in order to do that program, we would need to coordinate it through the existing home repair program that's run by the nonprofits using community development money, and there are issues with coordinating those funds and making sure that everything's done correctly. So that was going to take a while to get set up anyway. So our view is that, for now, we're not going to do that if we see that we have the ability to actually start that up, because maybe uses and other uses aren't taking up as much funds as we thought, then we can, we can look at that again. And then, Mr. Troyano, you had a question?
I had a few questions, actually.
Okay.
Last session, we spoke with Maura about paying forward on mortgages and arrears, well, which are not in arrears. Is that still part of this?
That is a, that is an allowed use under the federal act. It wasn't really something that we were looking for in our original thoughts, simply because the, there are a lot of operational issues associated with doing that. And we felt that because of the level of need when it comes to just delinquencies, that we would focus on getting people current.
It wasn't, we weren't sure that we could spend all the money with the income limitations when we were in committee last session. So that's why that subject came up. It appeared that this plan certainly accommodates and looks toward arrears and will likely be able to put this money out into the community. Another question is, if someone is current in their mortgage, would they be eligible for payment of utilities and property taxes? Of course, we all know property taxes can result in property tax sale, which is equal to a foreclosure and could put people out of their homes. Is that an allowed purpose here?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the benefits, the this money versus the the CARES Act money that we have for our mortgage assistance program, even if you are current in your mortgage or don't have a mortgage at all. I mean, if you're just somebody who owns their property outright or whatever, you know, you're lucky enough to have that, but you have issues with your property tax or with utilities, you can, you can apply for that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Can I just ask people, if you're, if you're representing an organization, it would be really helpful for me to take notes just to say who you, you're speaking on behalf of. It's totally okay if you're just secure as an individual. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Chip Troyano. I'm the vice chair of the General Housing and Military Affairs Committee in the Vermont House. Thank you.
We had a question. Can homeowners who received assistance during the prior program apply for this incarnation? Yes. If, for whatever reason, you applied during the MAP program and maybe received some assistance, and now you're behind again, you can apply, but remember, this is a one-time payment. If we find that people are, you know, getting assistance, but then coming back for additional assistance, we, at this point, aren't set up for that. But, you know, one thought would be to say, well, at this point, maybe you need to, and we can, you know, we'll provide assistance to go to a mortgage counselor or some sort of credit counseling service. Because obviously, this issue, whatever issue someone has, may be more than just a single payment problem or a short-term COVID-related problem and more of a long-term problem. A lot of my clients are in a position, and this is Cheryl Moyer. Okay, so you're, you are credit counselors, are in a position where their forbearance are ending soon. Do you know what the processing time will look like when we submit an application form and we'll hear back? Well, this is a different process than we've been doing with MAP, and I'm hoping it's faster. MAP was developed sort of by Vermont on its own, and the communication with the servicers was initially very slow, because we didn't even know who to talk to. And we finally figured out who to talk to, but even then, it's a lot of catches, catch can, and dealing with people who have other jobs. Because this is a national program with a huge amount of funding, the mortgage services are a lot more interested in it. And they are developing a more automated method and standardized method for all the various state HFAs that are doing this program to do communication back and forth. My hope is that as a result, the communication process will be a lot quicker. Though in this case, now these services will be dealing with 50 states asking this for this stuff and not just Vermont. So who knows if the volume is going to overwhelm them. But I am hoping that the responses will be quicker and we'll be able to get people in line and, you know, the, the hope is that the funds can be used in connection with either just getting someone current once their forbearance period ends or at least helping them when they're doing their loss mitigation afterward to, you know, maybe reduce the amount that there is owed and get them into a payment plan. That is something that they can really handle versus, you know, something that might be overwhelming to them. Discharged mortgage is not paid to a trustee. Oh, the payments go directly to US Bank. Would held the mortgage when it was discharged and bankruptcy was option to keep in order to continue to stay in the property. Well, I guess we would have to see, Terry, what the paperwork is there. If this is a secured transaction that is secured by the property, so that failure to pay results in possibly a foreclosure that would remove the owner from the property, then that is a transaction that can be, can be looked at. So I think we would just have to look at the individual situation there. Mobile Home Program at CBOE, some, they do need for urgent repairs. Yeah, that's the, that's the issue for the, for the repair program. There are a number of owners, not just renters, who need some help with that. And that is, like I said, one of the areas we want to look at. If we need to make an adjustment based on, you know, what uses we're seeing of the funds and that maybe some can be made available for that purpose, that is something we would definitely look at doing. And it would be available to mobile homeowners, even owners in parks.
George, can I just mention something? I've had a couple of questions. A couple of people have asked a really good question, which is about whether, whether you need to be a first-time homeowner to be eligible. I think the HFA is so known for serving first-time homebuyers that, that it's easy to assume that that's also the case for this program. Do you want to tackle that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. For sure. I don't want, that should hopefully not be a problem for anyone. Don't worry about that. This is, if it's an existing mortgage, whether it was your first-time mortgage, whether this is your third house, doesn't matter if it's your primary residence and there is a mortgage on it, that mortgage is available, is eligible for assistance. And Bruce. Oh, I see. Tricia Leon has her hands up. Do you want to ask your question?
Thank you. Actually, my name is Tricia Leon. I'm with Neighbor Works of Western Vermont, and I'm a housing stabilization counselor. And I actually have a few questions. One question is, if a homeownership center is going to participate in, you know, providing counseling services, when would the application and strategic outreach plan, et cetera, be due? Do you have any idea? Or is that going to?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, as, as, I know we've gotten some feedback from the homeownership centers as to what, you know, sort of level of need they foresee. I think that as soon as you can put it together, the better. I mean, obviously, we want to make these services available to the extent folks are asking for them. So that would be, that would be great.
Okay. And then I did just have a concern with, not a concern, but just, I know in the, you know, program description, one of the roles of the housing counselor is going to be negotiating with lien holders and lenders. And I'm wondering if that's just going to be, you see our role as just negotiating the amounts that they'll accept? Or if we're talking like full foreclosure counseling, loan modifications, those are all extremely time-consuming. Well, when I look at the amounts for, for example, through the rest of 2021, but then I, and then I think about it having to be divided up between all of the homeownership centers and Vermont legal aid and any other entities that might be providing counseling. I'm concerned that it might not be sufficient for the amount of time that's going to be required. So I just wanted to kind of express my concern about that, just because, you know, when we kind of were running numbers, the amount of time that it takes for foreclosure counseling and loan modification packages and everything. Just want to be realistic about these staff requirements that that would take.
Right. I mean, the, if there's going to be, obviously, a need for some level of triaging as to who you really want to, who can be focused on. We're not requiring counseling for everyone. So this is really a matter of, if somebody's asking for it, because, for example, they're coming off of forbearance, they've been offered a loss mid-package and they don't understand it, and they want to talk to somebody, that may be, for example, a situation where they would request a counseling service. And how much then that turns into time-wise, I think is going to be everybody's individual situation, as you know. So, but yeah, so the funding that we have for it is capped at what it's capped at. And so we, I guess we'll all have to try to do our best.
They just wanted to express that concern and throw it out there.
Yeah, no, I know. And there are other funds, obviously, coming for counseling services as well from other sources. So, you know, you guys all need to stitch that all together, however, the best you can.
Yes. And then I was also wondering if the HFA is planning on or could do any outreach to individual towns in terms of asking them to hold off on things like tax sales until this program is up and running? I believe I heard from Marie, I think it was Maria at Wyndham in Windsor County, that in her area, the town of Brattleboro has agreed to hold off on tax sales until this program is up and running. And instead of that being like a town-by-town thing, I know I've got a list of people that are in predicament and with property taxes that are just waiting for this to open up. And in the meantime, I have one, for example, that is going to tax sale next week. And it's, you know, I've reached out, they're working with Vermont Legal Aid, but the town isn't, you know, willing to hold off. And so I didn't know if you were planning on doing any outreach to towns.
Well, we do have, you know, contacts of the Vermont League, and I think they know about that. One, just, you know, from the perspective of your person who is going to go through the tax sale. I mean, they still have a year after the sale to redeem. So, you know, that, they will still be eligible to come and ask for help. I mean, it makes it all more expensive, basically, because there's lawyer's fees and then there's redemption fees and additional things. But, you know, they do, will still have time and they will, you know, just because the tax sale takes place, doesn't mean that they're automatically out. So that may be why the town's like, well, whatever, it's fine.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. How will you provide for seniors keeping their homes? Again, it's really a matter of what the need is, to the extent that maybe there's past due property taxes or utilities, if there's a more, if there's a reverse mortgage, again, you know, we can help with payments related to making sure that mortgage is not foreclosed on. Those are the things that can help seniors, reverse mortgage specifically, but then everything else, you know, it's the same as with everyone else. You know, it's really a matter of, you know, for those who are behind, you know, getting them current so that they're not facing an immediate issue. If a person, so temporary, another financial support, in the meantime, would they still qualify or is either a situation? If somebody is in for, it really is a matter of the servicer. If somebody's in forbearance and the servicer says, well, they don't owe me any money right now. And we say, but that just means they're in forbearance. They still owe you money. And they say, no, they don't owe me money right now and I can't apply the payments. I can't force people to take money. Most servicers, though, I know, are interested in making sure that they are looked at by the CFPB and other regulators as being cooperative. So I'm hoping that we won't get stuck in those kind of weird, you know, who's on first kind of situations. But that, I think, is what we're looking at. Can the Mobile Home Program at CB enlist to help out clients with HAF applications? Sure. We'll be happy to talk to you guys. The, the, the one thing about mobile homes is a bit bifurcated in the sense that mobile homeowner utilities and mobile homeowner loans, we will be helping. The lot rent piece is still going to be done through the ERAP program that the State Housing Authority is running. So unfortunately, just in order to reduce chances of duplication, we've sort of bifurcated it that way. And so they're going to be having to go through both. But yes, we can definitely use some help in getting outreach to the mobile homeowner. So that would be great. Applications RFP available for housing counseling available or forthcoming. We have, I think Leslie had sent out a request for information. Did you not, Leslie, that we've gotten some responses from regarding, you know, how much use and?
That was more, I was, that was in the budgeting process. I was really thankful to have the housing counselors be able to respond so quickly with information about how much this, operating this program would likely increase their hour, their counseling hours. And so I did get feedback from, from, I think, everybody, every housing counseling agency. But I didn't ask for anything broader than that. I was really just asking about one specific aspect of it.
Okay. Bruce, we can put out a more general email and ask for responses. It's not really an RFP. We would like to set up relationships with all the homeownership centers. I mean, the housing counseling has to be done through HUD, approved housing counseling services, and that's a fairly limited number of people here in the state. So it would be the homeownership centers, plus I believe Opportunities has a HUD approved housing counseling service that they do. So those would pretty much be it, and it's not really a competitive situation. But, you know, we will, we will send out a more general to request for information for that. Todd Buzzzy has his hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, my internet keeps breaking up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's.
Oh, and I can't hear you.
I'm listening in June.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Okay, now we can.
Okay, my internet keeps breaking up. I'll try to make it quick. I put in an application in June, June 2nd, and I had put in a request like back and forth to them. And they say the underwriters are working on it. And I don't get any response. I just ask them the status where I'm at.
And this is for one of the mortgage assistance program?
Program, I guess.
Yeah, the one that we're currently running.
Right. So there's nothing going on right now until you go through September, I guess, or?
Yeah, and it is in the, in the hopper. And I can see it in the system. So it's there. The, the, we are finally sort of getting through the pile. As I said earlier, the information flow back and forth with servicers, because we're not in a, in a sort of an automated situation and we're sort of doing it as just Vermont, tends to be fairly slow, but we are hoping to get all of the mortgage assistance program applications cleared through and done in the next few weeks. So I'm sorry that, I don't have a lot to tell you, but it exists and people are working on it. So how's that?
No, of course, yes. And I want to keep bugging or whatever. I just want to know where I stood. You know, it's just waiting and trying to pay and trying to do everything and see where I'm at.
Right.
What I got to do to make my next step?
Right, right. No, I appreciate.
That's all I'm asking. And that's all, you know, what I wanted to watch and very good information today. And so I'll, I'll hang in there and keep plugging away. I'm a tough Ramoner.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you very much.
I, well.
You could speak to the VHFA mortgage aspect. That's certainly not a requirement.
Yeah, absolutely not. It's any, any mortgage in the state. So it can be a VHFA mortgage. It can be any one of the local banks or credit unions. It could be, you know, Quicken or Rocket. I mean, it doesn't have to be just, it can be any mortgage relating. It can be any mortgage relating to a Vermont property. And then when the grants will be available, Wendy. That I is in, again, I'm looking at hopefully getting things signed up with every, with folks in the next few weeks. While we're putting together the website and the processes so that everything is in place. Or at least as much as possible can be in place when we open up for applications. So. You know, that's the timeline I'm I'm looking at.
I have another question if I could ask it.
Sure.
Thanks. If there's only one time payments, aren't there going to be people who wait until sort of the maximum amount that they can get? Because it's only going to be one time. I mean, of course, if your forbearance is ending and you're going to have huge problems, then you apply them. But otherwise, won't you just wait until? You, you think you're in the clear or your next job is going to start next month or something like that? I'm just, I'm just afraid.
I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what the, how what this, how the psychology is going to work. I mean, I think that, you know, there are folks who, you know, have gotten behind and just really want to feel like they can breathe. You know, and even if it's not the full amount, they'll be happy just to be able to start fresh. There are others who may be calculating that way. And if they can. Do that and hold it off and then get to us, then I guess that's fine too, but you know.
I guess it depends on how close they are to 20,000 as well.
Right, right, right.
If you're already there, go for it.
For sure, for sure. And let's see. There was a, oh, there was a follow up on this. Yeah, I don't, Terry, look, I don't know. Again, this seems like a particular issue. So maybe if you could just send me an email directly, my email is gdimas@vhfa.org. Maybe that'd be easier than trying to sort this out here because. Sounds like it's a very specific situation. For that particular person. Okay, so I think we've covered all the chat comments. And is there any one else who wanted to add? Add something? To the discussion?
I, I just want to say you, this approach is great. It's really thoughtful. And. It's like kind of soothing to hear you sort of covering all the bases and considering all these things, so thanks.
Well, thank you. I hope you'll be thanking me six months. Okay, well. Maybe everybody wants the last, the next six minutes of their lives back. To the extent that anyone would like. To let us know who they were with, who has not yet done that. It would be great if you could add that to the chat. And we appreciate all your, your thoughts and your comments and your attendance today. It's been great to have such a broad group come. And again, we'll. Work on trying to get all of our. Our relationships with the housing counselors and with legal aid set up in the next few weeks. While we're also putting together the website and the other and the other materials. Okay? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye. I'm going to stay on. Continue to add their information.
George, would you like me to continue with the recording or do you think it's okay to stop now?
I think just keep recording and as long as folks are adding their information in the chat.
George, does the chat get recorded?
I think it does, yeah. Becomes part of the record.
Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I think that's everybody who is going to add their information. So if we can turn off the. The record and thank you all. Thanks for the rest of you. Have a great afternoon.